Call to order the regular city council meeting on October 22, 2018. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lisa, let the roll call show we are all present. And we'll move on to the approval of the minutes from October 8, 2018. Councilmember Parisian?
So, Lisa, I have some on page... Eight. If you're at the bottom of the page about the last quarter, it says, "Councilmember Parisian stated she is indifferent on who makes the appointment, but the mayors have lived in the city for many years." I would take out, because I didn't say this, he knows the personalities, the community, and the business owners. I said that the mayor personally knows the businesses and can speak to their character and the value, and there is value in having the mayor choose or appoint. That's what I had said. Additionally, on that same page, if you move all the way up to the top quarter of the page, the sentence that says, "Councilmember Parisian stated the entire process needs to be, it should be, in writing." Just incorporate the word "in." And I believe that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Kibble?
Page two, at the bottom of the page, it says, "Councilman Kibble asked if we've relaxed our demands for, it should be added in there, the maintenance standards compliance..." Let's see. Oh, for 110 Detroit, "The maintenance standards compliance of..." So... That was the onus of that whole discussion, was finding out whether or not they were still obligated to the maintenance standards. On page four, at the top of the page, the fourth line down, were concept, three concept ranches, and it should say, "One two-story home." And, actually, that's all I had. Thank you.
I have one more.
Councilman, did anyone else have anything for the minutes? Councilmember Parisian, go ahead.
Lisa, on page nine, the very bottom of the page is the motion to recognize South Lion Educational Foundation as a nonprofit. The motion was made by me. Thank you.
I move the minutes as amended.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We do not have any bills this evening, but Councilmember Kibble, you had something you'd like to ask, so go ahead.
Well, at the last meeting, I had asked the question about, there were some invoices for HRC, for the Knowles, and I talked to Mrs. Moser, and she had explained to me that was for onsite inspections from HRC, and that is, although those were in our bills, that's stuff that we're reimbursed for. So, just wanted to make everybody understand that.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. We do have two things that have been added to all of our seats here tonight. One is trick-or-treat hours. And... A topic on the Board of Ethics and excusing councilmember from voting on the Thomasville conflict of interest. So if we could entertain a motion to add those to the agenda.
I'll make the motion to add new business item number five with the trick-or-treat hours and new business number six on the Board of Ethics question.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed?
Regent Lee. I would like to see these, you know, this kind of information come to us well in advance, so we have time to digest it.
Understood. So we have all in favor, everyone spoke already, and then all opposed? Motion passes? At this time, we will open up for public comment. Please state your name and address.
Hello. I'm a little out of my comfort zone here, so excuse me. My name's Deborah Hayes. I live at 315 Whipple Street. My husband and I live behind the prior Parks and Rec building, and we just have a little bit of a concern as to what the intent is for that. We know that's a residential area, but that, because it has been state or city-owned, that there have been the library and the Parks and Rec. So, a concern as to what the plans are for it, and that's why I'm here.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we're going to close public comment. We will now hold our public hearing for the 2019 CDBG application. And we will open up the public hearing at 7:36 PM. Tim, do you need me to read anything on this?
No, you could invite anybody that has questions or comments regarding the CDBG program or how the money will be allocated to come up and make public comment or ask questions.
Doesn't appear as if we have anyone here to speak to it tonight. So we will close the public hearing for the 2019 CDBG application at 7:37. At this time, we'll welcome our friends from Plant Moran to do their 2017-2018 audit presentation. Thanks for being here, guys.
Thanks for having us. Are we on? Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Mayor Chalchuk, fellow councilmembers, appreciate the opportunity tonight to come and present the results of the June 30 of 2018 audit engagement. I have with me two of Plant Moran's top performers, Tyra Lucy right here and Spencer Tawa. You may recognize both of them. Certainly Spencer's been with us a number of years on the engagement, and Tyler's also been here a couple of years. First time he's coming to the presentation tonight, though.
Thanks for being here, guys.
Before I move ahead, I also want to thank the city staff that was very instrumental in helping us get through this year's engagement and get to this point tonight. So interim city manager and police chief Collins, thank you for your assistance. City accountant Lori, you were terrific this year, and thanks for your help. Clerk Treasurer Deaton, thank you as well for your assistance in all your respective teams, because I know there's a number of people, Patty's here tonight, that helped us during the audit, because we do talk to a lot of people, and they usually may turn the other way when they see us coming, but they all are very helpful and provide information as quickly as they can, so we appreciate that. Included in your packet tonight are three deliverables, so you should have the audited financial statements for June 30 of 2018. You also have our letter to council, and I'll spend a minute on that shortly, and then a graph package, which is a PowerPoint presentation of some of the key highlights from the audit that we wanted to bring to your attention. In the council letter, we have a number of things that were required to communicate, and if you recall, on the front end of the engagement, we would have met with the mayor, we would have sent out a communication to say, we're presenting, we're performing the audit this year. Here's some of the risks that we've identified related to the audit engagement. Here is how we're going to address those risks. Are there any other matters that city council would like to bring to our attention to take a look at? And we did receive some communications from council on matters, or at least questions that we were able to field when those came in. So we appreciate that feedback always. So this communication that's there now is really the end of the audit letter. It speaks to some of the same matters that we talked about on the front end in terms of the risks, what we did, also some of the required communications that we're supposed to have if we have any significant deficiency or significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, as well as recommendations related to both the financials of the city and operations of the city. So with that, I'm going to have Tyler come up. He's going to walk through the PowerPoint presentation to go through some of the highlights. Spencer's going to follow that and walk through the letter to council, and then we certainly can either field questions along the way or at the end. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. My name is Tyra Lucy, and I'm going to go over some of the basic financial statement information that we went over in a more comprehensive manner. So start with... The first slide shows the general fund revenue. So a couple items I want to highlight here is that the general fund revenue did increase about $600,000 this year, and that was primarily related to the increase in property taxes. So that made up about $400,000 of the increase, and that was primarily related to the increase in the operating millage. On the next side is the general fund expenditures. So overall, there was a $200,000 decrease in general fund expenditures. When I took a look at, you know, a lot of the different accounts, the one thing that stuck out to me was the decrease in the hospitalization insurance. And that decreased about $150,000, and so that was primarily related to a decreased usage in the RAP plan as well as a decrease in the deductibles and copays. On the next slide, you'll see the general fund fund balance. In blue, you'll see the annual expenditures, and then in orange, you'll see the unassigned fund balance. So you can see here that there was a total increase in fund balance of approximately $600,000, and most of it went to unassigned of approximately $400,000. Okay, on the next slide, you'll see the non-major funds fund balance. And really, the purpose of this slide is to show the makeup of the non-major fund fund balance. As you can see, all seem primarily fairly healthy. And one thing we would recommend is taking a long-term focus, so maybe start to develop your five-year capital asset usage plan. That would be really helpful going forward to make sure that you're being able to utilize these fund balances appropriately. Any questions so far?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yeah.
Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
Okay. On the previous page where we had general fund balance, years ended June 30. Okay, where we had an increase, okay?
Yeah.
Is that where the leftover money in the individual budgets of our commissions that we didn't use, okay, because we didn't have a use for it or whatever? Does that, what that goes in, does that money go into this particular fund, unassigned fund balance?
It would primarily go just for the general fund. If there's any excess for that, it would primarily go to...
Then they're not the same thing. I thought they were pretty much the same thing.
What do you mean? So if it was for water and sewer, if there was leftover in the budget for there, it wouldn't necessarily flow right into the general fund.
Oh, okay. Boo. Okay, fine, that's it.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, and then on the next slide, this slide is kind of showing how the revenue sharing, so the state shared revenue, if you were to hold 2003 amounts constant, you can see that, you know, there was a large dip in that, and it's starting to come back. So fiscal year 18, the increase in that certainly helped, and this has had a drastic impact on how City of South Lion, you know, funds their operations.
The state revenue is the second largest source for the city in most cities, after property taxes. So you can see it's taken 15 years just to climb back to the level we were at in 2003. So I know, you know, a lot of communities have struggled, especially through '08, '09, and '10 as we were coming out of the recession. You know, a big reason for that was within the state revenues. That's something that, you know, is somewhat out of your control. So I always tell clients, when you're taking a look at your budgets, this is an area that you want, have a good sense for what the state is thinking they're going to provide going forward, but you never know, because it is based on the revenues the state brings in. So there could be times when they budget higher than what you're going to receive. So you always want to be conservative with this number, and I think that history helps to really support that.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, on the next slide, you'll see the water and sewer fund. So this is included in the financial statements under business activity, business-type activity, excuse me. One thing I want to highlight is both the operating revenue plus property taxes and operating expenses excluding depreciation and adding capital improvements and debt service have remained fairly consistent from fiscal year 17 to fiscal year 18. One thing to note is the debt service related to the property tax that's, that has a millage attached to it. So that was 3.3 mills this year with a total collection of 1.1 million, and then the debt service was 1.26 million. So that's starting to come a little bit closer. On the next slide...
Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
I'd like to just go back to that point, because that is an area that I worked on extensively in 2006, and I want to make sure that I understand what you just said, is that the debt servicing on that mill, I mean, on that debt for the sewer plant, was not completely serviced by the mill.
Correct.
That is the problem. I thought we had that taken care of. I thought that during the budget season, that number was pretty much taken care of, because I questioned that, whether or not the mill was high enough to service the debt. Because if you can look at this area here, operating revenue is blue. What you want to do is make sure that your operating revenue is higher than your expenditures. So you're not dipping into additional funds to service that debt. So I can provide the city manager with the, or Lori or Lisa can provide the city manager with the actual bond that was issued with respect to this debt. And this was a real source of contention when I first came on council. So I'm surprised to hear this.
When, when you, the budget you're referring to is the one that's past spring?
Yeah, that we just...
So that would be for the next fiscal year? So that'd be for fiscal year 18, 19?
So maybe we have it right then, but we didn't have it right, we still didn't raise it high enough then for...
To cover the full debt service.
To cover the full debt service.
The reason for that is, we still had money in the DW, or not the DW, the SRF fund that covered portion of that debt. So in combination with the revenue, the millage that we levied, it was, there was enough there to cover the debt. We're trying to pay that down, get that balance in that account down, so we don't have to levy the full millage, but you're going to get to that point eventually, which is not there yet. We still have money left.
But the whole point of an unlimited tax bond is because that gives the city the unlimited ability to tax whatever is needed to service the debt. And, and I don't understand why we aren't using that particularly last year when I checked with the school district and they were lowering their mills. So the city of South Lion never would have noticed the difference. So we could have saved some money in that fund. We could have raised that mill to what was absolutely needed to service the debt, because we never would have noticed it, because the school board was lowering their mill, so the offset would have equalized everything. I just don't understand this philosophy. I don't.
Well, you'll get there eventually, but you don't want to make money off your millages. I think the end result that we're going for is a total break even. And the first couple of years when we levied the millage, we had more than enough in there, and that's, we still have money in there, and there's quite a bit in there.
So you say money needs to be unspent as a...
Unspent, I'm sorry, that's what I'm saying. So I guess I'm not understanding, Maggie, why you would want to raise millage higher than we need to when, at the end of this debt service, we want to break even. We don't want to have any money to make.
Because that's the whole point. I'm not convinced that we, that we're in that position that you say we are. That's why. But that's okay. That's just a difference of looking at the fiscals.
But that's, that's why we didn't levy the exact millage that it took to beat, because we still had quite a few other thousand dollars.
Yeah.
We have unspent proceeds from the SRF yet, so it wasn't used to actually do the upgrades. You can use that to pay off debt service, if it's not going to spend on anything else, and then levy for the difference between that and the full debt service. So maybe it would be helpful is to take a look at what's left
Exactly.
in the SRF proceeds.
Yeah.
And if you look at, certainly, the debt service amortization schedules going forward, see what the gap is, if any, and then that will tell you what your mills need to be in the public debt.
Wouldn't that dollar not be any restricted?
Well, restricted fund balances and other things in there.
Right, and that's part of it, right, yeah.
And we can show a historical chart that'll show the number of years, exactly where we are and what the difference is.
I've seen the schedule. I mean, I've seen the schedule. So that's the only thing, is I just want to make sure. But we can deal with that at the budget time, but that's why I was just, so I'll make a note of that.
I can send you the dollar amount on Sunday account tomorrow.
Yeah, I mean, you're excellent at doing that. I mean, really. Okay, thank you, Lori.
So then, moving on to the next slide, shows the government-wide net position. So this slide shows on the full accrual method of accounting, so that would be very similar to how business financials are presented. So a couple of amounts that I wanted to highlight here are the governmental activities, total assets. Last year, there was 27.3 million, so you can see there's a slight increase there. And then for total liabilities for governmental activities, right at fiscal year 2018, it was 5.1 million, and last year was 5.6 million. And then similarly, for business-type activities, total liabilities this year were 11.3 million, and that's down from 12.4 million last year. And then another item I wanted to address was the unrestricted net position. So last year for the governmental activities was 1.2 million, and this year unrestricted was 1.8 million. And then similarly, for business-type activities, unrestricted was 3.9 million last year and 4.1 billion this year. And then the next slide shows the governmental equity, also on the same basis. So this is the general fund and the capital improvements fund added together. So a few different amounts here. The unrestricted back in 2014 was approximately 5 million. In fiscal year 18, it was 1.9 million, which is an improvement over fiscal year 17 of 1.2 million. Restricted has remained fairly consistent from 2 million back in 2014 to 3.1 million in fiscal year 18. And then the other item was invested in capital assets. It did decrease from 18.6 million to 17.4 million, and this is primarily due to less capital asset spending than the existing assets also continuing to depreciate. Any further questions on the graph package? Okay? Spencer will go over the letter?
So on this government-wide presentation, and Spencer's going to talk about it in a minute, this is really, if you were a corporate entity, this is what your books would look like now. All your pension liabilities, 100%, any post-employment benefit liabilities are fully in this statement now. So this is what a balance sheet would look like on a corporate entity, because your statements include two types of presentations. A fund-based presentation, which Tyler went through on a lot of the graphs there, that's what you budget for, and then there's this government-wide, which is the full accrual, like a corporate entity. So that's why we cover both of them, to give you some sense. This is more of a long-term view. The fund base is more of a short-term view, kind of year-to-year. How'd you do against your budget?
Good evening. My name is Spencer Tawa. So a couple of things before I get into the letter. So two things I want to point out on this slide as well, on the government-wide. You have two items in there, one for your pension liability and one for your OPEB liability. So your pension liability, you guys have been getting used to that. It's been on there now for four years with implementation of GASB 67. In the prior year, your liability in total for both water and sewer fund and the governmental activities was 5.1 million. This year, it did decrease down to 4.6 million. And part of the decrease really related to the assets held at MERS, where your pension assets are. Given the good investment results from last year, that really bumped up your assets. Your total liability, that did increase slightly, but the investment earnings were able to offset that and bring down your total liability. The net OPEB liability, this is new from previous years. So GASB 75 was implemented this year, and what that is, is your subsidy that you guys give, it's 500 for general employees and then 700 for police and fire employees. That is your projected liability as of 6/30/18. So you did have a, you did hire an actuary to calculate that amount, and we have recorded on your financial statements during this year. And then one other thing, too, your general fund. So as Tyler mentioned, your revenues did exceed your expenditures. That was for the first time in a few years, so you won't be getting, I think, a nasty letter from the state related to that. So that's a good thing. All right. I am going to go over the letter, as, I think you guys should all have it in front of you. As Doug mentioned, this is a follow-up to our letter that we sent back in July that went over, you know, our plan, scope, and timing of the audit. It's, it has our Plant Moran letterhead, in case you guys are still looking for it. Date is September 24, 2018. Maybe you guys don't have it in front of you on the packet?
It was in a separate packet, unfortunately, so...
So...
I don't have it in this one. I've got it somewhere in here.
I'm just going to go, give an overview on this, so...
We can share.
Yeah, you guys could share. I'm not going to go through every single page and every single detail in this, but I will go over, just a high-level overview on some of the key items. So this is broken out into three different sections. The first is our internal control-related matters. So any findings that we had during the course of our audit that we found that we need to communicate to you guys. Section two is communications were required to report to you as a city council, given the auditing standards. And then last is other recommendation and other information that we think is pertinent to the city, and you should look at that as well. That's majority of the pages in here. So I will start with section one, internal control-related matters. So if you do have it in front of you, it's page two. But essentially, we did have three findings during our audit this year, and two of them were material weaknesses, or what we deem material weaknesses. And really what that is, is it's an internal control-related matter that we think is deficient enough that could lead to a material misstatement on your financial statements. The first related to wire transfers, and this is a repeat from previous years. And you guys don't use too many wire transfers from PNC. The only wire transfers really that are made is for the school district or to the county, I believe it is, for tax dispersments. Our only issue with it for internal control-related purposes is that you have two individuals, you have the treasurer and the bookkeeper, who have authorization to access PNC online and can initiate and approve transactions or wire transfers. So currently, if one person initiates it, somebody else comes in and approves it, and that's a great dual control. The problem is, they're both admin users on the account. So in essence, somebody could go in there as an admin, create a fictitious user, initiate a wire transfer, and then also approve it on the backside without really anybody preventing that. Later on, you do have detective controls, where you'll find that out, but then, by then, it might be too late. So our recommendation was to, you know, kind of strengthen those controls to not allow that. And subsequent to your end, we're told that the city does now have procedures in place where the city manager now will get an email notification anytime a wire transfer goes out. So that'll help identify and prevent wire transfers, fictitious wire transfers going out. So that's a way to further strengthen the controls.
Is that still after the fact, though?
It is after the fiscal year. So when we're testing it, you know, we're testing as of 6/30/18. We could note it on the report just to also say that, that, okay, you know, after the year, we have not audited it, but we were told that that process is in place with PNC.
Councilmember Parisian?
I'm sorry.
It still happens after the wire has occurred, but it's, you know, I would say virtually immediate, but it's very timely, at least, for having a response.
It'd be better to catch it upfront, though, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Tawa, in regards to that, I just want to make sure that I'm clear. So are you saying that it's an issue that we have the treasurer and our financial consultant? The bookkeeper? Both doing the wire transfers, and you would only prefer one? Is that what the...
No, no. So it's proper that there's two people doing it, because you want one person to initiate it, and then you want somebody else to review and say, oh, yeah, this is, this is correct. It's going to Oakland County, you're fine. The problem is having that admin access, where they could add and remove users, and that's where the problem comes in.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Thank you.
One other thing with the wire transfers, too. There currently isn't any restriction in place for, like, limits. So we recommend that the... So we recommend that the city implement a reasonable limit. I mean, you know you're not going to maybe do $10 million or whatever the number might be. So that just is another further control to add to your, to your system.
Still, that dispersment to the county is rather large, though, isn't it?
It is, yeah. So whatever number it could be, I mean, it, you know, you're not, you know you're not going to do $100 million. I mean, you guys don't have $100 million, but just something that's a little bit over that, that would just put another restriction in place.
Pointing that out.
Although, you know, the remittances occur in certain times of the year, you know, when someone's property taxes come in, so maybe the limit is higher for a three-month period and then less for the rest of the year.
Yeah, that makes sense, right.
Yep. The next item relates to preparation and review of bank reconciliation. So the city has about $18 million in various bank accounts. End of each month, you should be reconciling those bank, bank account balances to your GL balances on, in a timely manner. So during the course of the year, there was, there were a couple of accounts that the city attempted to reconcile, but there were some unreconcilable differences that were not identified until after year-end. Now, there wasn't any, you know, misappropriation of assets or anything like that. That's what a bank reconciliation should prevent. There wasn't anything of that nature, but obviously for, you know, good best practice controls, these reconciliations should be performed and completed, you know, at the end of each month or shortly thereafter each month, just to identify, all right, where, you know, why are we missing $5,000, or, you know, why is there a reconciling item? So it wasn't identified until after year-end, and there was noted that some money had to be transferred from, say, water and sewer to general or vice versa. So our recommendation is that these are, you know, prepared, not only just prepared and reviewed timely, but also ensure that the reconciling items have all been identified.
It, it sounds easy to do, but it's not always easy, especially if you have credit cards involved and things of that nature. So it's not just a simple, it's not necessarily a simple process, but it's a good control to have that when you do have reconciling items, you get those resolved as quickly as possible so you don't carry over to the subsequent month.
The last items on page three, this is what we deem as significant deficiency. We don't consider to, to be a material weakness to that level, but it still gets to the level where we need to report it to you. And this really related to during the course of our audit, us finding some audit adjustments to your financial statements, which were all made. And the financial statements you guys, we have issued and are, are given to you guys. So we identified some reclass entries that should have been made between income accounts and, and such. So our recommendation is just that, you know, a better review process be in place to review those finance, the journal entries that are made during the course of the, the year essentially, and make sure that the financials are right at any given point during the year.
I got a question. Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
Just a question. What do you recommend? I don't know just how our procedure goes for what you're, you're describing, okay? But what do you recommend for a procedure for us to double or trickle-check our accounts every month? Okay, if that's, I don't know if that's done or not. But what, what would you recommend procedure to go through? Like, bookkeeper, city manager, clerk, treasurer, what, how, how would it go? What would you say?
Yep, so, so every community needs to look at it individually, because there's always a cost-benefit of it. Obviously, you guys have a pretty small accounting group. It's, it's pretty much two people for the most part. So right now, a lot of it's, you know, Lori doing the entries, but you might be able to bring in, you know, Patricia involved in it as well. Then maybe the city manager could also look at things on a monthly basis, and they could probably notice, hey, this doesn't look right. This, you know, this is in water instead of being in sewage revenue or whatnot. So I think those kind of things would be, would help, is having a review maybe on a monthly basis of, you know, budget to actual, right? That might push out something that doesn't look right or something that was incorrectly inputted. As well as having maybe Patricia or somebody else more involved in looking at it. So if maybe Lori does an entry, Patricia looks at it or vice versa.
I got a question. You work with other communities.
Mm-hmm.
All right. How successful are other communities our size, okay, with being able to control the, the input, okay? Or the, the, make sure the accounting is correct?
Yep.
You know, with what staff we have under our management plan, okay? What do you compare us with? One of the better communities or one of the communities that needs a lot of work?
No, there definitely is not a lot of work. So any of the entries we found, none of them were material to your financial statements at all. Just some of the entries were relatively small amounts that we found. Again, as auditors, every community we go to, we always find something. It always seems like that way. We always find something. So no, I think you have, we don't, we don't come in here and find a ton of entries, especially significant entries that would misstate your financial statement. So I, I think you're, you're one of the better ones, I would say. I mean, there's a lot of communities with maybe even a bigger staff than you guys have, that we find more entries and, and more significant entries that don't get it right. Lori's really good at contacting us too throughout the year. And, you know, if there's any questions on anything, you know, we're, we're more than happy to help. But no, I mean, we, we did not find a significant amount of journal entries during the course of the year. And this is, this is the first year we've had this in our letter, I want to say since I've been on it.
Councilmember Chriswell, you got something?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What were you looking for that you found these inconsistencies?
Just our regular audit procedure testing. So, you know, one example is like water and sewer. You know, when we're doing our water and sewer testing, when we do an analytic of looking at what the balances are, we then look at your GL detail. So we'll look at each entry in, in that account, and we would notice things that are off. Or if we're looking at state shared revenue and we're confirming the amount with the state, like the state says you guys got 900,000, we would confirm that that's what you have recorded on your books. So that's really the procedures that we use to, to identify this.
Is this a training issue? Is this something that somebody can just get additional training on?
I, I don't think so. I think it's more of a review thing, like a dual.
Yeah, I agree, Spencer. I may ask you, you asked a question, how are, how do other communities do? We have communities where we do over 100 journal entries, just to give you some sense. So here it was less than, less than 10. And so just from a relativity standpoint. But are there some things that can improve? I don't, I really don't think it's a training. We haven't had this item in our letter before, so this isn't a repeat occurrence, so to speak. But there were some things that could have been cleaned up a little better this year. I think that, I think that's truthful to say. And so I think that next year, as we go through the year and close, and, you know, to Lori's credit, she does get us involved in some of the year closes where she has new items or things that may be different than where our typical recurring item. And we do walk through those and talk about those. There are a few this year that we, we didn't have a conversation on, on the front end that maybe this time going forward, we will, to help prevent this again.
Dan. Councilmember Kimmel, go ahead.
Just like proofing copy, having a, a second set of eyes look at it would end up really being an assist. And we have people in the house that can do that. I was wondering, did you, was this pretty much random entries? Or were they things that showed up in a reoccurring kind of a way?
It was random entries.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Just random items. There, there was one item too with, related to the street sweeper that you guys had bought last year. And that was more of, for accounting reasons, it should be recorded, but it's not like any cash went out the door last year. So that was kind of just miscommunication between departments. So that was another added thing to it where Lori didn't get all the information that she needed to, to book this accounting entry, because it's not like anything came in related to cash or, or an invoice or anything like that, that would let her know. So that, that was one example that we had in there as, as well.
Councilmember Walton?
In regards to the wire transfers, there's lots of things that you can do to change that. You can have one person enter it, one person required to be an approver. That approver could be the city manager. It could be based on a dollar amount. They can make different levels of how many approvers you need based on the dollar amount. So there are several things that you can do to change that one, if that's a concern.
Yep, there's that, different options that different banks have too. So you have to work with really your, your banking, with, with PNC essentially, to see what options they have. And I know Lori has talked to them about, well, what options do we have with, with regard to the admin? Because right now, the initiation and approver is there. It's just that, that admin account. But now with, you know, with the new city manager, they could look into, all right, how, how should he be involved in this process as well?
Right, and you can change the admin level as well and make it so that they can't make any, they can't add an approver, or they can't add a wire entry.
Yep. And there's other places that we've seen too where they would, if any wire goes through, they'll call somebody. So they'll, just another verification, they'll call the city manager, and then he'll say, what's this 10 million going out the door?
Yeah, there's, there's lots of ways to easily combat that.
Mm-hmm. All right.
Yep.
Moving on, so page four. So this starts our required communication with the auditing standard. So the things I want to talk about in this page, in the middle of the page was, we have a note in the financial statements that talk about the implementation of GASB 75 related to the OPEB liability. Not only were you recording it as of this year, the $464,000 related to that liability, but you had to actually restate last year's financial statement. So if you notice in the financial statements where you have beginning balances for the net position, we had to restate that to incur last year's liability as of the end of the year. So that's one of the small changes as well. And there's a footnote that talks about that differences as well. The next page, top of page five, it talks about the most significant estimates in your financial statements. And really, the two biggest ones relate to the pension and OPEB actuarial evaluations. The actuary, obviously, you know, they can't just look in a crystal ball and say, oh, you have a million-dollar liability. They're using all sorts of assumptions. Any of those assumptions could change, right, with your actual experience, and your financial statements could be, you know, misstated in a way, or the liability could be misstated. So that's something to keep in mind. We've looked at the assumptions. They, they appear reasonable to us based on our review of it and knowing what other actuaries are using, looking at like, say, inflation rates throughout the country and, and all that.
Excuse me, now, is, is there any way to forecast when you're really skewing, the numbers are starting to skew? Because I mean, we're not going to do an actuarial every time we turn around just to validate that, so.
No, I mean, you guys have an actuarial report every year for pension, right? MERS, MERS has an independent actuary that, that goes and does it. They're using their set of assumptions, right? The investment rate of return, mortality tables, their inflation rate and whatnot. They, they do an experience study every five years, which kind of looks back at, all right, we're using this mortality table. Is that reasonable compared to what's actually been, been going on at our communities? And they might change that, going up or down. They, you know, there's also salary increases assumptions, there's disability provisions as well. So they're doing the actuarial experience study as well. It's never going to be exact. I mean, I think, you know, the number right now is 4.6 million dollars for your net pension liability. I guarantee it's not 4.6 million, right? We don't know exactly how much it is, nobody does. But this is the best estimate. You have to use the best estimates, and this is the best estimate, given their assumptions that they use.
I guess the accuracy of those forecasts, though, I mean, we certainly can't be held responsible for our, you know, our suppliers to be making the, all those numbers seem like the reality.
Right.
So how do, how are we supposed to be? Is this simply information for our own benefit?
This is just information in your own benefit, saying that the 4.6 is an estimate.
Yeah, okay.
You know, and it's using the best estimates out there.
We can't influence those numbers.
Yeah, you, for, for MERS, you really can't, right? Because they're using their investment rate of return that they use is for everybody, for all their communities.
Right.
All their salary assumptions are for all their communities. But obviously, they've done their, their experience study with, with an actuary, an independent actuary to, to validate those, that what they're using is, is proper.
Okay, thank you.
All right, page six, so the last section, other recommendations that we have during the course of our audit that we, we deem significant, significant enough to inform you guys of. These, these are not material weaknesses, they're not significant deficiencies, but we, we want to tell you about it. And there's also some other information in here related to maybe activity from the state level and, and whatnot that we thought would be beneficial for you guys to read as well. So I'm not going to read everything again, just a couple of things. So one of the things was the water and sewer rates and the property tax revenue, which we've already had the discussion. So again, just to clarify with that, just if you take what the money's left over, what your millage rate is currently, what you're projected to, to pay out in the future, take that all into consideration when setting, setting up these, these property tax millages that you, that you have. As currently, right now, I think it's 3.3 mils right now. Couple of things at the bottom, just related to information technology stuff. Obviously, it's, it's a, it's a big thing now with IT, as you might know, Dan. So one of the things we noticed was password strength on the computers. That would be something that we recommend just to strengthen right now with, with the number of lockouts and whatnot. Next page, so the top of page seven, so.
Councilmember Presleyan, go ahead, sorry.
I noticed there's something about locking the security room and providing a secure room for our IT equipment.
Yeah.
That seems like a big issue to me. I would, I mean, I know the doors are generally locked, but this is an issue that's come up before. I don't know why we haven't addressed it yet as a council. We probably should make that a priority. That's just my voice out of one of seven.
Yeah, and I can be corrected, but I think there's like two doors that lead to the server room. And I think one usually is, is propped open, so it was just something we observed that's part of our IT testing as well.
I'm glad you observed it, because I think we, I know it's been brought up before, but I don't know whether it just slipped through the cracks. I think we do need to address it again. So at some point, we should probably make that a priority for our agenda. Doesn't have to be soon, but sooner better than later. Thank you. Thanks for bringing it forward.
Yep. So top of page seven, so cash drawer activity. So the city handles numerous transactions throughout the day related to their cash, you know, water payments, property taxes, other fees. And so it was noted that daily cash reconciliation of the drawer is not performed always at, at night. Sometimes it's the next day, or deposits are not always turned in every single day. Sometimes it might linger for two days just given activity level and, and whatnot. So we recommend that cash drawer reconciliation be performed daily. As well as, right now, it seems like the person collecting cash is also the one reconciling their drawer. So we, we recommend somebody else kind of sit in there. Either, either they do the reconciliation or two people are reconciling at the same time. And then you'd be more consistent on, on doing daily cash deposits at the bank as well. And then the, the last part that relates specifically to South Line is equipment charges. And we've had this in the past as well. It more related to last year when we were doing that Act 51 report that state had mandated for one year and then, and then got rid of. But right now, they allocate, right now, the city's allocating a set amount of equipment charges to each fund. And that amount has not changed in a few, quite a few years. So we recommend that the city really look at those equipment charges that are being charged to the funds to see if that's still reasonable now, after all these years, since it's pretty much stayed the same.
And those charges should really be based on usage of the equipment and the established rates that the state of Michigan has put out. That's really how you'd like that to work. And I know we talked with the new city manager a little bit about that when we met at a draft meeting. And I think we'll, we'll, that's going to be taken look at.
I got something.
Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
I believe we have a system in place here at the end of the day, okay? Where one person counts the cash in the drawer, okay? And another person verifies it, okay, at the same day. It's two P, it's a two-person process. Now, maybe it doesn't go on every day, but it does go on. And with what amounts of money we're dealing with, which aren't astronomical or relatively reasonable, that seems to be the system that has always worked best for us.
Yeah, and best practice would say two people should look at it, somebody verifying it with them. There's also voids as well, maybe not having the person whose, whose drawer is also doing voids, having somebody else come in and do the voids for them. Because that's another way to kind of, you know, you could always, somebody, you collect cash and then you void it. It's a, it's a way to kind of get around the system. So, so the more you could have dual controls in place, the better. And then, like you said, if, if it is dual process for cash drawer reconciliation, that is what we recommend.
Councilmember Kimmel, go ahead.
I, I think clearly that's best practices kind of stuff. Have you seen any evidence that there's any kind of mischief potential?
No, and I want to be clear, no, we have not seen any.
Excessive voids and things of that nature, you know, so.
We did look like, we did look at the voids a little bit too as well during our, our process. And no, we, we not noticed anything, it's just, it's more of a best practice, as you said. Just to, we want to prevent things, right, from happening. So then not after the fact, we come back here and say, oh, this happened.
That, yeah. I, that would be like the second last thing that I would be really focused on then, so.
Councilmember Chriswell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This last issue that you were speaking about, I believe, was in your critique from last year. So this is the second year that this is showing up in terms of the reconciliation of the cash drawer. So I think after two years, we should be getting it right.
The, the rest of the letter, I'm not going to go over. It is good stuff, you should read it. It talks more about some legacy costs, some new reporting that the state has that, that Lori has to fill out, which she loves to do, just, just more reporting. One of the things too is an updated chart of accounts, which really affects Lori in, in one of the reports that we have. They delay, the state did delay it, but now it's, I think sometime in 2019, they are implementing it. And they're providing us more and more details on that so we could assist Lori when that finally is complete and they release the, the new chart of accounts, but.
Are those two identify some, like, forecast problems, or? Are those two identify some, like, forecast problems, or is it just...
No, it's their reporting ways of doing things. So they'll want, like, property tax classified as this number, so then when you're reporting to them, you know, they could kind of take your numbers, compare it to another city, and it could all be uniform, essentially.
Okay.
It's primarily derived standardization and comparability of data, is what the underlying reason for it.
Back and forth from the state to us, or with us and other communities?
For the state to look at communities at large and compare them.
Okay.
That's all we have on the letter and the graphs and the financials. So we're available to answer any questions that you guys might have.
No, I think that was...
Nice job, thanks.
Yeah, nicely put together and a couple tips that we will definitely make some moves on. But does anyone else have anything for Spencer? Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
I just wanted to say that I think predominantly, one of the reasons why we did not receive another letter from the state stating that our expenditures exceeded revenues because we had a great team last winter that really, really pulled together and did an incredible job. And I think Plant Moran, I think by giving a seminar to council, by coming in here, the structure that was worked on, I think was absolutely needed. It's probably been needed for a long time. And I just want to thank Plant Moran for the incredible dedication that you've given the city, including Lori. Lori, I know, worked countless hours on that budget last winter. So I think it's because people spent an incredible amount of time and dedication to it. Otherwise, if we hadn't, I'm sure we would have received another letter.
Councilmember Kibble.
I think it's important, though, to recognize that we bought a fire truck paying down the whole thing.
That wasn't the reason.
That threw one of those letters into the pile. So we wouldn't have had three letters in a row. So it's just a, kind of a fake premise.
Thank you very much, guys, and thank you to Lori and Patricia for all you guys' hard work on that, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Appreciate it.
Yes, thank you very much.
All right. Well, we'll give these guys a minute to pack up, and we'll move on to the discussion of downtown. Do we have the remotes for that? If you don't hand it to me, I might be able to hit it better from back here. I wasn't insinuating that.
It's...
One more time.
I like to eat every day, apparently every moment.
I just consider it back on...
Twice.
Twice. You pressed it twice.
I did.
No, the other twice.
I pressed them both twice.
Team effort here. We're good.
There's two separate remotes.
All right. All right, Bob, let's...
Technology, isn't it fun?
Yes. Discussion of downtown, how we do it now.
Yeah, real quick, a lot going on this time of year. We're going to be celebrating two of our building rehabs on November 15th. There's going to be a press conference, a ribbon cutting, and a grand reopening. Again, 10 o'clock, November 15th, that's for 115 and 117 North Lafayette. The new business directory will be out the week of November 12th. The, we just finished the holiday gift guide with South Line today. Just wrapped it up with the final draft. That'll be out the week of November 19th. As you know, Brotoberfest was canceled. Looking back at the weather, I guess volunteer issues weren't the only issue we would have had. So we're going to make changes. Actually, moving forward, looking at the issues that surfaced with Brotoberfest, at our February 2019 DDA goals and objectives meeting, we're going to be instituting two new rules. We're going to have a policy that DDA board members will serve as the event chair. Also, we're going to have, all DDA events will have work plans with a minimum of six months in advance notice with all the different steps in those work plans. And I put together a packet for you tonight for the work plans that we'll be requiring for DDA events for 2019. That's really it. I've got, well, just quickly, the events. This is, as I said, a real busy time of year. So the Downtown Kids Trick or Treat this Thursday. We're going to have that street closure coming up here in a couple minutes. So 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., we're looking for tons of people downtown. Abayub, our chair of that event, has the word out, and so we're excited. We'll probably see somewhere between 2,000 and 3,000 children downtown with parents. That was just 2,000 to 3,000 children, so it's going to be packed. We'll have entertainment and the intersection, again, music and dance groups, and so it'll be a great, great night. We hope we have good weather. Ladies Night Out on November 16th, 5:30 to 9:00. National Small Business Saturday, November 24th, 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And then Cool Yule. Really want to give a shout out to Mike Horlocker from Presbyterian Church, doing outstanding job of keeping the tradition of the parade and centering more on downtown, and Mike's doing outstanding job. So we're in great shape. Lot of good stuff.
Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had just two comments. I just kind of wanted to know, have you started working on Small Business Saturday?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, work what's called a community champion, and that information will be coming to us very soon.
Yes, I wanted to know. So you're going to be getting the things that come with it, the posters and everything that goes with it?
Yeah, door stickers, posters, doormats, yes, balloons, banners.
Excellent, excellent.
We're going to go crazy.
Well, thank you for coordinating that, because that's real important. That's a real important Saturday to have. If people don't know, it's the Saturday after Thanksgiving.
Yes.
And it's devoted to, I think it's branded by American Express.
Yes.
And it's to get people motivated. We have an incredible downtown. So I could hardly wait, because I want to start spreading the news on it.
That'd be great. And we're going to do that community-wide, too, all through the south and north ends of the...
Excellent.
We're going to go beyond that.
Excellent. I also want to let you know that I've received a lot of compliments on the downtown, so thank you for everything you've done with the corn stocks. It was wonderful driving through tonight with the orange lights. You did a nice job, Bob.
We are the only ones in Oakland County that do that.
It's very nice. You've done a nice job.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Move on to new business. Hidden Creek, I believe it's supposed to say Lift Station at Life Station, RTU replacement. Recommendation is to approve the request for the replacement of the RTU for Hidden Creek Lift Station.
Make motion that we approve the replacement for the RTU at Hidden Creek Lift Station.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. New business number two this evening, Downtown Kids Trick or Treat on October 25th. Go ahead, Bob.
Really, it's the street closure that Lloyd has approved, basically the same time as in the past.
Councilmember Kurtzwell.
I move to approve the road closure request for the annual Downtown Kids Trick or Treat from 6:00 to 8:30 p.m. on Thursday, October 25th, on North Lafayette, from Whipple Street to Lake Street, South Lafayette, from Lake Street to Liberty Street, East Lake Street from Wells Street to Lafayette Street, and West Lake Street from Washington Street to Lafayette Street.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. New business number three, DDA board appointment.
Yes, you have the agenda note. Of course, at some point with our new system, this is really Mayor Pellchat's nomination as of the board minutes being amended. But you can see that at the October 11th DDA board meeting, the draft minutes are attached. The board, again, voted unanimously to reaffirm the support of Jeff Heinonen. Jeff is here tonight. We're excited to have Jeff on board. Should he be appointed by you folks? And are there any questions that I could ask, or Jeff himself?
Councilmember Presleyan, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First and foremost, thank you, Jeff, for wanting to come forward and be a part of the community. That's very cool, and I appreciate everything you're doing with the downtown and your business as well. So thank you for volunteering your time. It's appreciated. And what I'm about to say is it's actually not directed at you at all. I just wanted to express my frustration with this entire process. I thought the timeliness of this was just kind of, it's setting South Line back instead of forward. We used to have issues with timeliness before, and we've been kind of moving things along all this time, except for this particular time in general. So what I'm trying to say is, with the DDA, this application was submitted in July, and then it's now, we're on the cusp of November. And so granted, we had issues with the bylaws and et cetera. I know, and you went on vacation for two weeks, but that was two weeks. It's been four months. So I'm out here trying to promote people to get onto the DDA, get onto Parks and Rec, get onto any commission that we can get volunteers to volunteer for. So when I have individuals who actually want to come forward and volunteer, it's holding up the process when we just hold on to applications. So my issue here is, this was submitted in July. It is now almost November, and we're now just getting to it. This was approved by the DDA in July. And I know you want to be here to speak if you wanted to, or just if we have questions, direct them to you. But I just don't see why this took so long. That's my first issue. My second issue is that we're dealing with vacancies, and right now, it's come to my attention this past week that we have two new vacancies in the past week on the DDA. That means two members resigned. We have yet to see their resignations. I'm sure they're coming. But with that being said, we have an application in the pipeline for an individual who wants to be on the DDA, who wants to serve. So I don't want to see that kind of just sit. And I understand with our new bylaws in place, we have the DDA providing a recommendation, but ultimately, it's the mayor who appoints and council to approve. So why wouldn't we push the application to the mayor, let the mayor give it a thorough review, and move from there? Sitting and waiting, because it says in here specifically that there is a motion to take any action on Norm Foltz, and that was tabled. And we're looking to the city manager and the city attorney, if necessary, to give an opinion regarding Norm Foltz sitting on the board. But the minutes don't reflect that from the DDA meeting. So I'm seeing a disconnect here. So we're saying we're going to hold on to Norm's application, even though now we have two individuals who'd resigned from the DDA. We're holding on to Norm's application, and the minutes don't reflect that from the last DDA meeting, but it says it here in the agenda note. So the disconnect is, I don't see where, why are we holding applications?
We're trying to come up at your direction with a new process that applies to all of our boards and commissions, and this was not immediately put forward. Jeff asked to be present when it was put forward. Since that time, as you know, Norm Foltz's application surfaced. It went then to the DDA board. We had DDA board members wanting to reevaluate Mr. Heinonen's already unanimous approval. That created a very confusing situation with Mr. Foltz present at the board meeting, with a board member making that request. So that was tabled. Because it was tabled, it did not come back here, because it was tabled for the new city manager and the city attorney, if the city manager so decided to have that reviewed. That's why it didn't come back immediately.
So why would the board want to reevaluate in a unanimous decision to have Jeff on the DDA?
I really don't know the answer to that, other than the fact that that was stated, and a motion was made at the meeting to reevaluate, to table, rather. It was a very unusual situation, I will say. I've never seen that in all of my days, working with any DDA in Oakland County or Michigan.
Yeah.
Nonetheless, it surfaced by a DDA board member, and so the DDA, one of its members, tabled the meeting, tabled that issue at the meeting.
Okay.
So we would have brought things back here much quicker, but it was a combination of Mr. Heinonen wanting to be here. We want to get all of our processes put in place, the bylaws, bringing those up to speed. It's a very unusual sequence of events, three things coming together, and I think we are now on a track. Both board resignations are oddly, I've not seen that, are effective December 31st. So we did discuss that the, you know, there's really not an opening until December 31st.
So again, my only thing I'm going to voice with that is, I am just very frustrated and disappointed with the way this panned out. I had called City Hall back in September and had asked, what's the situation? Why is this being held up? It was because Jeff is on vacation for two weeks. And I was like, oh, okay, that's cool. You're on vacation for two weeks. But now it's in October, and we've never, ever paid attention to the bylaws, because they were never approved. They were never in effect. They were just kind of guidelines that were never approved by council.
Well, we didn't know that at the time.
Correct.
So we followed the guidelines to the letter, and then you asked for a new process. Our DDA board tabled an item that was pertinent to moving this forward.
So...
Mr. Foltz attended our meeting. It was on the agenda. A board member asked for that to be on the agenda. And so we followed our, all of our rules and our bylaws that we thought were adopted. It wasn't just until two weeks ago that we found out that the previous city manager never processed our bylaws.
Okay.
So these things are all being disclosed. We didn't hold anything up, anything unusual, other than trying to accommodate someone's request, following your request to update our procedures. So we are following as many things as we possibly can, including our bylaws, to get this fixed. And certainly, with two new positions open December 31st, I welcome Mr. Foltz to the next meeting and have his application discussed. It would be wonderful.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Kurtzwell, and then I'm going to come over to you. Go ahead.
Well, I was going to make the motion.
Oh, okay.
And then you can debate it.
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
Well, I'm concerned a little bit. First off, I feel bad for you, Mr. Heinonen, that, you know, this has kind of been the lead-in to your being able to get approved by this. Clearly, as was stated earlier, this has nothing to do with you. I'm concerned about the potential animus that can be a product of having this post-dated resignation date. Is the rest of the board comfortable with the idea of having people hang in there until the end of the year?
I honestly don't know what to think.
Okay, because it just seems like that's an environment that might end up being a mischief-making kind of event. So, well, Maggie, if you'd like to make that motion, that'd be great.
Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Thank you. I move to approve Mayor Damtelchat's nomination of Jeff Heineman for appointment to the DDA board, as unanimously approved and recommended by the DDA board at the July 12th DDA board meeting and reaffirmed at the October 11th DDA board meeting.
My second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes.
I'd like to request, would Mr. Heinonen like to say hello, introduce himself?
Sure. Well, I'm Jeff. Thank you for that. I own Heineken Engineering, obviously. You can see that this was important for me, because after 20 years being in business, I moved my corporation here. I did that because this is the place I want to be. It's where I want to live. It's where I started and where I want to end. And this is just another way for me to give back and just to be part of the community. And it was just, it is important. It is disheartening that it did take this long for this to happen, to be honest. But we got to the right place. So it's, I'm just happy to be part of it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Kurtzwell.
Jeff, can I ask you a question? Actually, I think your timing's perfect. So, you know, make lemonade out of this. It's okay. That is delayed a little bit. Give us the scoop on what's going on with the platform over at your business.
Okay, the scoop. Well, there's not a whole lot of scoop. The platform, as you could see, is, what drove this was the foundation for the Christmas tree. It's something that, as a kid, I was inspired by a painting I saw, and it's something I carried with me my whole life. So I always thought that if I was in a position, I was in a downtown, that I could do something like this, I would do it. Well, when I purchased a building at 350 South Lafayette, I had a spot to do that. So I knew right away when I bought it, I said, geez, if I can make this work, we're going to figure a way to do that. Now, I didn't plan on bad ground. I didn't plan on groundwater. I didn't plan on all these things that, you know, just roadblock you all along the way. But, but, but no. So for me, we put a foundation in for this large Christmas tree, again, to help the city bring people in. I think that's important. I think a lot of people bypass our city, and I think this is just one way to bring it in for the businesses, for the people, and just to build a better community, a stronger community, for all the new people coming in. And this is a way for me to do that. And it's just something that I've always wanted to do. So it's kind of a, you know, what we call, at my office, a passion project. So it's just been something that we pushed and pushed and pushed. And just about a month from now, we'll have that tree... tree lit. So it should be a fun thing.
What is the term that you're putting around, the platform? And could you sort of explain, is that platform for public use? Is it for your use? I mean, what is the, what is your intent of the platform?
You know, I don't, I don't think we have a full extent of that, the use yet. Obviously, once, what you see around the perimeter is stainless steel. I didn't like the monotone concrete. It was just too much concrete. We want, the landscaping goes in tomorrow, finish the landscaping, that's stainless steel there. You'll see a railing going all the way around it, as shown on the plans. So that'll be all railed in. So it's essentially a patio. Now, we've been approached by several folks to use this patio for different events. Certainly, we're going to use it for our events, our open house, for example, and just, you know, during Pumpkin Fest for the staff. We just have a lot of hopes and potential uses for that area, because it is large, and it's one of the few in the DDA. So, you know, I don't know that we know that completely. The main role for me is to make sure people could enjoy the tree, they had somewhere to enjoy it from, and it was safe, and get rid of an old parking lot. It just had no use. It just, it was just, it was a piece of blight in the middle of the DDA, or at the edge of the DDA, I should say. And it just, I don't know the full extent of our use for it, but I knew I wanted it to look right. And I want to be able to use it for my events, to help bring people in. And then, you know, I think what we do with it long-term is really kind of up to what people need. Whatever I can do to help the city, we'll use it. It's easy. Whatever use we need, that's what it's there for. So I don't know what we'll do with it completely, but sky's the limit, far as I'm concerned. I built it, let's use it.
Thank you. I think you're going to be a great asset for the DDA.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions?
I just hope that becomes a destination place for people to hold events, local businesses and things, appreciation parties, whatever it might end up being. I think that'd be great.
You know, I hope so. You know, it's, you know, it's been a huge project to pull this off. And I, exactly, I hope it gets used a lot. You know, we spent a lot of time and effort making this happen. And really, I hope so.
I enjoyed when you guys done your open house, when you, I saw people in lounge chairs, or lawn chairs, around a little Weber barbecue fire out there. I thought that was cute.
We always have fires out there, so we do that a lot. And it just, again, it brings people to us, and it just allows people to enjoy it. That's what we built it for.
Well, that's great. Welcome aboard.
Well, thank you.
Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
Yes, sir.
Jeff, we've talked a number of times.
Oh, yes.
I'm enthused with your platform, okay? And I think it'll work out nicely for the community in the future, for many, beyond our lifetimes, okay?
Certainly hope so.
A platform for positive events, and like Glenn mentioned, a presentation or something, you know, by a high official, a governor, or a secretary of state, or something like that. We have a regular event. But I'm hoping, this is back to the DDA.
Mm-hmm.
I'm hoping that you can add stability and a sense of direction and focus to this DDA, which has been considerably lacking, in my opinion, over the last three years, up and down.
Well, I'll give it my best effort, I can tell you that.
Continuing coming back to council and wanting to get a repair job, whereas Parks and Recs, cultural arts, historical, they don't come back to council and keep asking, fix this, fix this, you know? It doesn't happen with them. But it does with DDA. And I'm hoping you can add that key to stability in the DDA.
Well, I appreciate your vote of confidence. I think it's clear that I put a huge foundation in, and it's more symbolic than anything else. We're not going anywhere. Okay, that's for sure.
Okay, good luck.
Thanks so much. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Jeff. Welcome to the team.
Thank you, Jeff.
Moving on to new business number four, first reading of ordinance to prohibit marijuana establishments in the event voters approve ballot proposal 18-1 to legalize recreational marijuana. Tim?
Mr. Mayor, Mayor and Council. So you have an agenda note and some materials in front of you. I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time getting into the details unless there's a bunch of questions and discussion. But I do want to highlight a couple of things. At the November election, the voters in Michigan will have the opportunity to basically vote to legalize marijuana. There's a timing issue. There's initiative legislation, which is why it's a ballot proposal. It would become effective 10 days if it's approved after the certification of the election. It would create the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act. Section 6.1 of that act allows municipalities to opt out and prohibit or limit the number of marijuana establishments in their communities. So with that understanding, what this ordinance does is it proposes and puts you in a place where South Lion can take a wait-and-see approach if the voters approve recreational marijuana in the state. And largely, this is because we just really haven't analyzed this act and how it would affect the community. And I think that's largely statewide. There's a lot of open questions, particularly given the history that Michigan has had with the Medical Marijuana Act and the Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act. And there's different terminology. And you should, if you haven't, you'll get a copy of an additional letter that has an interesting article by a Michigan planning person that does a good job of breaking down the act and what some of the different terminology is, and what some of the issues in play are. So largely, this is a, to protect the city and take a wait-and-see approach with respect to recreational marijuana.
Councilmember Walton?
If there's no discussion, I'd like to make the motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance to prohibit marijuana establishments in City of South Lion.
Discussion, discussion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, but Councilmember Presian would like to discuss, so go ahead.
I just want to go on the record to say that I'm opposed to this. I won't be voting in favor for it, simply because I'm pro-business. And if the ballot initiative goes through and recreational marijuana is legalized, then I don't believe that it's our discretion to stop it, simply because I think it's, I think it's one thing to restrict it and put a limit on how many marijuana facilities we have in South Lion. I'm in favor of that. Or if we want to put this matter to a vote locally, I'm also in favor of that, especially pursuant to section 6.1. That is within our discretion to do so, both of those things. However, coming right out and saying, no, absolutely not, I would never say that to a business. No, you can't be here. So the way that I look at this is, the statute, as I read it, is treating recreational marijuana, once it's approved, as if it's alcohol. You have to be 21 years of age or older. You can't distribute to minors. You have to show your ID, et cetera. All of it is in comparison to liquor stores. We have liquor stores in the city of South Lion. Why wouldn't we have a marijuana facility as well? So for me personally, again, I'm pro-business. I think we can limit it. Absolutely, I'm in favor of limiting how many facilities we have, or putting it to a public vote. But I can't come right out and vote for it, that we don't have any at all. Thank you.
Councilmember Kittle, go ahead.
I guess there was an awful lot to try to digest in here, and it's an evolving kind of a thing. So the notion that this gives us a pause button, what is going to likely end up changing that will push us into coming to a different conclusion than being on pause?
Well, I think the pause is a default that, so we're starting from the default of not allowing those establishments within the city, based on this ordinance, if it passes. That would provide you an opportunity to both examine, take a proactive approach and examine the act, and find out if it's something that you would like to allow. But I think it's largely a wait-and-see. And part of that is derived from, particularly, the Medical Marijuana Act, where there was a lot of litigation and confusion about what was allowed and how it impacted criminal laws. And we now have, on appeal to the Michigan Court of Appeals, a circuit court order that basically says you can't zone medical marijuana activities that are in compliance with the act. So, which is, turns a lot of communities, including South Lion's, approach to regulating medical marijuana and allowing it with certain restrictions and subject to police power regulations and zoning authority. It turns everything upside down. I just, the impression that the reason this ordinance was proposed and drafted the way it is, is because of that confusion and the uncertainty with creating a whole cloth new industry, even though it looks like alcohol.
Well, I think that it's important, too. There's a lot of evidentiary information being provided from communities that have already taken the leap, not all of which is positive. So I think that that, the longer that we end up reflecting on some of the results from those experiments, the better off we are, the idea that there's not a way to, for police to determine whether or not somebody's under the influence, like you can liquor or alcohol. I think that that's problematic, the idea of creating an environment where impaired driving could take place, and we don't really have a good resource to be able to manage that. That complicates things, in my view. So the medical marijuana thing, to me, was a wholly different idea, that the medicinal aspect of that, I thought, changed the dynamics from the recreational aspect. And I don't, personally, I don't have any grudge with anybody that gets high or whatever, does their own thing. It's just how it takes place in our community and the prevention of their impairments being a safety problem for the rest of the community. So I'm comfortable with saying no now, knowing that we can rescind our view down the road when things become more clear. So, thank you.
Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also am going to vote for this, only because it's a temporary gap. I would like to just have an opportunity to sit back and see what the impact is going to be on other communities. I think that we, South Lion does have a drug problem. I think it's been noticed over the years. Unfortunately, the, we've lost some young students to overdoses. And I think if you look at the research coming out of Colorado, if they had to do it over again, I think they'd do it differently. So I think there is a societal impact. I'd like to give it a little bit of time to see what the community has to say about it. I mean, they're the ones that have to live with the consequences of the decisions that we make. So I would just like to put a gap to it at first, put a stopgap, just for a little bit, and sit back and see what happens. And one thing I do want to address on that issue is, if it does go through, and it looks like it probably will, that just because you're smoking it, doesn't mean your employer can't test you for drugs. So for those of you that think this is going to be a free ticket to do whatever you want, you better check your employee handbook, because your employer will have every right to discharge you or terminate you if you don't pass the drug test. So this new law that's going to be coming in, it's not going to be a scapegoat for you. So careful, be careful, be careful.
Councilmember Presian?
I just want to point out for the public as well, that South Lion has an opioid problem and a heroin problem, but not a marijuana problem. Marijuana, the studies have shown that actually, coming out of Colorado and Canada, as you can see, Canada just passed it. 15% of their population is all for it and buying it, and they can't even keep up with the mass amount of people who are looking to buy it, and it's all taxed. So all that revenue is going to Canada. All the revenue from Colorado is helping their industry, helping their economy, et cetera. So there are a lot of pros that come with this, but please don't be mistaken that South Lion has a marijuana problem. We may have an opioid crisis, of course. We may have a heroin issue. Absolutely, we do need to recognize that. But marijuana can also be used in other ways, which is the whole point of the Medical Marijuana Act. There are individuals who live in South Lion and the Ann Arbor area, this surrounding area, Green Oak, et cetera, that have debilitating issues, life-threatening diseases, or terminal illnesses that rely on marijuana. And they use that to help get through their day, get through the rest of their life, for as long as they have to live. So there are pros and cons to this, absolutely. But again, I'm looking at this from a business standpoint. If this passes, and the voice of the people says, yes, we want recreational marijuana to be legal, then I don't think we should be sitting up here saying, no, we can't have that in our community. I think we should listen to the people, see what they have to say, and then again, put it to the vote in our community. Thank you.
Councilmember Richards?
Just want to add this. Marijuana in the balls and in the, they put it in the jars, is currently available at Walgreens, okay, in the township. And they also sell opioids, but it's tightly controlled. You have to have your prescription. Okay? Now, I don't know if they sell the marijuana at CBS, across the street. That's in the city limits. Because I don't go there. But it is available, and it seems to be a controlled, tightly controlled, and successful with people that have the card to buy it through a pharmacy distributor. And that's all I'm saying.
Thank you, Councilmember Richards. We have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
We'll move on to new business number five. Consider setting official trick-or-treat hours for Halloween on Wednesday, October 31st, 2018, within the city limits. Recommendation is to approve between the hours of 6:00 and 8:00.
I'll make the motion. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make the motion to approve the setting of the official trick-or-treat hours for the City of South Lion, between the hours of 6:00 PM and 8:00 PM on Wednesday, October 31st.
All support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes.
Is this five?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
All right. So now we'll move on to new business number six. Let's see here. Consider rescinding referral of conflict of interest question to Board of Ethics and excusing councilmember from voting on Thomasville due to conflict of interest.
Mr. Mayor and Council, so you've been provided with an agenda note and some basic materials. You should have also received an attorney-client privileged letter that provides a bit more analysis on this issue. Last meeting, the, an objection to Councilmember Kurtzwell's stated and declared conflict of interest arose. Council passed a motion to refer that to the Board of Ethics. Having spent more time reviewing this issue, the city charter, section 4.6(c), provides a procedure that identifies how, that because this involves a council member, the council is ultimately going to have to make the decision on whether that financial interest and conflict of interest, or the nature of the conflict of interest, what it is, and then whether the council member is excused. So the first part of this concept is to rescind the referral to the Board of Ethics. I think that would be, given that we are dealing with a land use application that has, we want to keep that on track and don't want to delay it unnecessarily, I don't think that it's a useful way to have that board use its time, only to receive a recommendation where most of the facts are clear here. There's a procedure outlined in the charter, and this board, this council is going to make the decision. So there are two things going on here. There is section 4.6 and section 5.2 of the charter. That provides that any member that has a financial interest in a matter should not vote and cannot vote. The ethics ordinance, which was amended in March of 2018, provides for roles or interests of a council member that are incompatible with the proper discharge of those duties, because they tend to impair independent judgment, which is really the influence and impartiality concept. So what we have here is, we have a council member who is an attorney and has had an on-and-off again legal relationship, an attorney-client relationship with a property owner, which is Colonial Acres, and that is immediately adjacent to the Thomasville parcel. In my opinion, that creates a clear conflict of interest. Whether it's a direct financial interest is of some question, but I think the expectation of her being compensated to represent the property owner adjacent to Thomasville that will be impacted by that development creates a conflict of interest, based on that financial interest. I think that triggers 4.6(c), and it triggers 5.2, and it excludes her from voting on the Thomasville matter. Alternatively, under the ethics ordinance, you have 276A1, I believe. Actually, it's B1, I'm sorry. Her role as an attorney, she basically stands in the shoes of her client, which is an adjacent property owner. They are going to be impacted by that development. And in particular, they are concerned about the cross-access easement, whether it's the former format from 2016, or currently, the future cross-access easement. the future cross-access easement that's being set up as a condition of that approval. Again, I think that influences her, and it tends to influence and impair her independence of judgment. And on that basis, under 4.6(c) of the charter, this council should excuse her from having a vote on that matter. If there are questions, I can answer any questions.
Councilmember Kittle, go ahead.
I have, I'd like to ask Maggie two questions, if I could. That would end up freeing me from any concern about this. Are you, as it exists, representing Colonial Acres or the Hunt Club, Hunt Land, Hunt Club Land Company?
Pardon?
Do you, are you currently representing Colonial Acres Hunt Club?
Yes, I am. And I, and by the way, I had to speak with the client to get permission to disclose that, because under the professional rules of conduct, an attorney is not supposed to discuss who their clients are.
Okay. Well, that's a, that's a whole different animal. There was no way to know that that was what was going on. Quite honestly, I don't, I don't follow the, the rest of it. But nonetheless, I'm okay with us just rescinding that, then.
Councilmember Walton?
I think that my concern is Ms. Kurzweil was, or councilmember Kurzweil was very clear at several prior meetings that she had a conflict of interest, and none of those ones were questioned. So, I don't understand why we questioned her at this last one, said we were going to send it to the Board of Ethics. As you know, I voted no, and I am all in favor of rescinding it, because it doesn't make any sense to me.
The, so are we to presume that everybody that you've ever had as a client, you won't be able to vote as a city councilperson on anything that has something to do with a former client?
They're not a former client.
That's not what I asked you.
Well, this, the question is, I'm only speaking as to what has germane before council, is the present individual is a client of mine. Any other conflict issue that comes up, I'll take it up with the city manager and city attorney and bring it to council.
Well, the previous things that you had made a claim of conflict, you know, people either understood that that was an existing conflict, or just made the assumption that that was the case, so.
I'm referring to only this matter.
Okay.
There were several meetings prior where we did not participate.
Well, I know, because there was no action being taken. That's why it really didn't matter at that time, so.
Councilmember Parisian, you had something to add?
Sure. I'd like to make the motion to approve to rescind referral to the Board of Ethics and approve motions confirming councilmember Kurzweil's conflict of interest and excusing her voting on the Thomasville matter.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Do we need to make a second motion there? Are we good to go?
I don't think we're going into closed session, right? Oh, wait, are we talking about closed session motion?
I was just curious if we needed to.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think councilmember Parisian did a nice job of blending all three of those recommended motions and takes care of the issue.
All right. Thank you, Tim. Moving forward, onto the budget this evening. Councilmember Kurzweil?
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I do have just a couple of things that I wanted to talk about very briefly on the budget. I just want to make sure I let council know that I did give our new city manager a week before I knocked on his door to talk about the budget. So, so I came in this week and I did talk about the budget, I did discuss a couple of issues, and I did have a couple of follow-up questions with you regarding budget issues. The first one is, as to capital investment plan, do you have a rough draft? I mean, do you have a time period when you think you'll have a rough draft of the capital improvement plan? I'm just curious, because we did talk about it.
I can say right now that it will not be presented within this budget year, only because we are missing a couple of key components in preparing a capital improvement plan, one being a water and sewer rate analysis that needs to be done, be able to assist in preparation of that. But I will tell you this, and it was discussed with you as well as other council members, that I am already starting to gather data and starting to populate information to create this plan, as it relates to equipment, as it relates to improvements, as it relates to the Pacer study that was done for roads, I mean, with our engineer regarding utilities and improvements that need to be done. Some of those things will obviously need to be incorporated within future budgets, but it will not be within the completion of this budget year, so I'd, not by June 30 of 2019. But I do plan on already starting to populate it, so it will be presented sometime next year.
So, when you put in your manager's report that you would like us to start providing you with information regarding the budget, is it only about the annual budget that you would like the input, or am I free to say, I'd like to see this in year 2020/20? I mean, what, I'm trying to define what my role is during this budgeting process. Is part of it to provide input to the capital investment plan, or should I just restrict it to just budget issues?
Well, the most immediate need would be the 2019-2020 budget. That doesn't mean that some of the things that are incorporated or discussed by council cannot be included into future years. So, let's say we start to talk about road improvements, and a council member brings up that they would like to discuss doing a citywide pavement plan and improvements. My main concern in preparation of upcoming year's budget is start to add some of those items to the coming year budget, but also start to populate data for future years, because I think that does set us in the right direction, because we can never just think about the current year. So, I think anything that any council member does bring up, it is not only for this year, but also future years. So, as I asked in my manager's report to start to ask for information about what you think your goals and objectives are, presenting that and discussing that at council will not only include this coming year, but also several future years.
Okay. All right. That's a lot clearer. Thank you very much.
Anyone else with anything on the budget this evening? Okay, we'll move on to the manager's report.
A few items I want to bring up. You had discussed at a prior meeting regarding the water tower, and I provided council with information regarding the potential cost for repainting the water tower, and if discussion wants to take place on that at a later meeting, we definitely can do that. I also want to bring up the Dixboro paving project. Reminder, this Wednesday, the 24th, there's going to be a public informational meeting on the project from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Miletian Middle School cafeteria. They will have representatives of the road commission there, so if you want to attend that meeting to find out more information, I will definitely be there on behalf of the city. Discussed earlier regarding the boards and commissions, I had presented to you and council members a draft of a board and commissions application that I think would be pertinent for the city to follow, and I think would be pertinent specifically for new members coming on the boards and populating our potential volunteers that we have in the future, for people to be able to fill in online, be able to come in as a resident, be able to fill it. And if you have suggestions regarding that particular form, I'd greatly appreciate it, because it does describe exactly what we want to do, describes the boards and the commissions, that potential people could serve on the number of members. It asks for information on those individuals, on what experience that they potentially can offer, so when an appointment does come up, the mayor and council and a specific board can review that and determine who would potentially be the best person for that board.
Paul, can I cut you off for just a second?
Oh, sure. Sorry. Right on.
You go ahead.
So, I have a couple of questions. So, with regards to this, I like the descriptions that we've provided. What about questions resulting default to the city? I liked on the old application, there was a snippet, there's two questions, that said, are you in default to the city, yes or no? And do you have any family members that are on the council or board, or something along those lines? I forgot the exact nature of the question. But there's two questions that were removed, one regarding default to the city and one regarding whether you have family members that are on city council. So, I personally, and I can't speak for everybody, but I would like to see those questions in there. I think that information's valuable. Not to say that someone who's in default to the city can't serve as a volunteer, but I think it's important to know.
Okay. Just so you know, I did not remove those items. This was an actual form that I used within other communities, so this is just something that I brought and that I created.
This one? The candidate questionnaire?
Right, the candidate questionnaire. So, that's something that I created and brought here. I did add other commissions and other boards that I did not necessarily have in other communities. So, this was the particular form that I had. I did not necessarily say, let's take off this, or let's add this, or let's start from that one. I basically started from my own form, so that's my fault.
I like it, and don't get me wrong, I really like the form. I love the descriptions. I think it's excellent. I think having descriptions is really important, too, because a lot of people who come to South Lyon may not be aware, it's not on our website, and unless you are approached by someone who's on a board or commission that can give you some background to it, you have no context of what you're getting yourself into. So, I applaud you for giving the description, and I think this is an excellent form. So, I guess in the event that we're merging maybe the two forms to create something, that's just my request, is that those two things would be in there. But again, I think it's up to council as a whole, so we'll leave it at that. The other question I have is, I guess based on this particular questionnaire, because this is what I was going off of. It says, please feel free to submit an updated candidate questionnaire at any time. Reading that, my question is, to whom? Are we submitting this to the clerk? Are we submitting it to the individual who's the chair of the commission, the chair of the board, the chair of the committee? I guess giving a little bit more context, so that everybody is clear, who are they submitting this application to? If it's online, it's pretty straightforward, but for individuals who are picking up and application and turning it in, how does that process work? Let's spell it out. And lastly, are we following up with the applicants? Have we given that any thought? So, once a application is timestamped and received, do we follow up with them if they're accepted, if they're not accepted? So, say for instance, a candidate came to council, or did not come to council, and council approved their application. If they're not watching the meeting, if they don't, if they're not here, how do we get in touch with them?
Well, the information would be provided in here and how we can get in touch with them, but it would be up to the mayor or a particular board for when the recommendation is made for somebody to sit on a particular board, whether they select that person. I did have a, kind of a clearing item on here also, just because you happen to submit one, doesn't necessarily mean that you're going to be on a board, or you're going to be on the board that you potentially request. Sometimes, obviously, if we have vacancies that are there, we'd like to have somebody who has expressed an interest to be on that particular board, or we may be in contact with that individual. Yes, you asked to be on the planning commission, but would you consider being on the zoning board of appeals instead?
I like that.
Because it still does some of that. So, we can make contact with that, you know, that can be either done through me or done through the mayor. But it is really trying to gather individuals who would like to be volunteers and potentially can be on one of those boards, and not necessarily removing anybody from council, but I do think that is an excellent training ground for people to potentially serve on council at a later date, or serve on another board, or potentially school boards, or be county commissioners, or whatever. That's, it's a good progression of boards. So, we will keep them on file, we will review them, and when a position comes up, we have that file and says, we have four members, four people that want to serve on the planning commission, and one vacancy just took place. Let's look at these, and then we make contact with that, with those individuals, or that individual.
That's perfect. I love, I love everything about that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
I've been approached by other people that express an interest in being on a commission. And my response is that I don't have any control over it, it's all selected, but you have to go to City Hall and fill out an application, and wait for them to call you and notify you that there's an opening on this commission, and as you said, maybe suggest would they like to be on another commission, that in dire need of a new member. Also, the other way, I've recommended to some people, why don't you seek a commission? You're knowledgeable, well-spoken, you live here, you're experienced, you got history and backing. Go for one of the commissions, okay? And, because you have to have a number of people to make a commission function with the quorum correctly, okay, which is a problem sometimes with parks and wrecks. But anyway, I'm just saying, I've approached it two different ways. But I think that making sure they know that just because they submitted an application on a particular day doesn't mean they're going to, two weeks later, they're going to get notified. It might be a little time awaiting before they ever get notified, and then, you know, but it is, as you say, it's a, it's an excellent training ground for future, being on council if they chose to do so. I was on a commission, Maggie's been on a commission, and both of us decided to go for council, you know? So, you know, that's, you're absolutely correct.
And we want to make sure that people continually can submit these at any given time, and not just necessarily because they were the first one submitted, or whatever particular board that they would want to be, that they would necessarily be appointed to that board. They could be appointed to another board, because you may get another submission that may be even more qualified, that you may want to have on a particular board, and obviously that's up for the people that do in fact make the recommendations. But we definitely don't want to discourage people, because we do want volunteers, and we think having this database, having this more pertinent on our website, or even through potentially us moving forward with Facebook as well, trying to get as many volunteers as we can for this community.
Can I ask a question about this?
Councilmember Kittle, go ahead.
I was curious, you have this, please check up to five applica, or five applicable boxes. Why on earth would you put a limitation on that?
Well, that was just something we did before, because people were checking every single one, it was just somebody just said, I want to be on a board, and we were trying to get them to at least narrow their focus, so actually get them to start thinking about a particular board, and get them to start thinking about or reading some of these descriptions about what they best can serve on.
I love the, I love the description aspect of it. I mean, to give people a generalized understanding of what the duties are, but I don't see any real upside to limiting that to five people. I would like to encourage maybe having a narrative section in here where they could perhaps pigeonhole themselves, just by what their expertise is, or their particular likes, or whatever, that it might end up driving us selecting a box that might be a better fit.
And I could make that change. Instead of the additional information, we can make that more of a narrative sort of question.
The, and thirdly, what's the method for getting this electronic?
Us creating the document and putting it online to be filled out. We'll have to work out all the details with that.
Okay. I mean, that gets it out, but how do they, I mean, they still have to come in and deliver it to the clerk?
Well, they could potentially, I'd like to have it where people can fill things online. That's a goal of mine, is to have other forms, building department forms and other things where people can submit online to the city, and then you're able to look at them right away.
Great. That'd be great. Thank you.
Councilmember Kurzweil, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had two things to address regarding the manager's report. Has there been any discussion regarding an increased law enforcement presence at the polls on election day?
Yes, I've had a meeting with the clerk, as well as the police chief, discussing some of those items. We don't want to necessarily get into details about what in fact those security measures are, but we have sat down and we have had discussions individually as well as a group, so.
Because I know other communities are also, okay, thank you. And also, I received a phone call about some debris that is behind the building where the Salvation Army is located. I think it's actually, it's behind the part of the building that says Fit Body Boot Camp. And before I passed that along to you, I drove down to take a look myself, just to make sure that the person was giving me accurate information. And there's some porcelain toilets that are just thrown in the back, and so you have people that, you know, are on their balconies to their condos or whatever, and that's what they're seeing. So, I don't know if somebody's just using that as a dumping ground, or whether or not there's renovation going on, and that's where they're just throwing stuff, but I was just wondering if somebody could go down and take a look tomorrow.
Okay, sure.
Oh, thank you very much.
And I just wanted to fill or finish the manager's report. I know we stopped in that one particular item. If I can, just one other thing I just want to bring up to people regarding the sanitary sewer repair that we had on Lake Street or 10 Mile today. That was an emergency repair that we needed to have done. The DPW did a great job making that particular repair. It was, you know, six feet underground and had to be done. It was just something that was discovered as of late last Friday. Repair was made, they're going to be putting pavement down. There will be a couple of days for that pavement to secure, or to cure, but while I will say, as a residents and the schools and everybody, the notification that we got out to people, everybody was very courteous and went on the proper detours, and it worked out really well, so it's glad to see that.
Councilmember Walton, go ahead.
Just one quick thing. I had emailed Lisa earlier today to make sure to know that there was a tree on the rail trail, and to see if we could get the DPW out there. Lisa, did you?
Yeah, I forwarded that to the DPW.
Perfect, thank you.
All right. Anyone else have anything for the manager's report? Great, thanks, Paul.
Yeah.
At this point, we'll open the floor for a second public comment. Please state your name and address. your name and address if you have anything to say. Okay?
Porter Lee.
We'll move on to council comments, Councilmember Richards, go ahead and lead us off tonight.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I have a number of things over the past two weeks, and some of it three weeks, and I want to go fairly fast, and I'll do my best, folks. First up, I want to extend congratulations to our police officer who retired recently, who had been on the force for 25 years, Mr. Tracy Brooks. And I knew the man, he was an excellent and a marvelous police officer, in a marvelous police department, and I wish him the very best in his retirement, and I hope we can replace him someday with officers as good as he was. Okay, second item I want to mention is, I included a prospectus in the packet for all of you to just notice and look at. This is just to let you know that I'm on the ball, supposedly, okay, trying to, with the Bonner Properties, and that's the property right across the street, and I ran into the real estate lady, and I asked her, while she was in her four-wheel-drive truck, do you have a prospectus with you? She grabbed one and gave it to me, and I made copies at the school. Or no, right here, I guess, yeah, at City Hall, and I wanted everybody to get one, okay? Now, this lady, Mrs. Kim James, she does not work for that realty company, she works for another realty company, and she was showing 12 locations that day, and she said, I've got to keep going, I'm on the buyer's side, not the seller's side, I don't have any information about the owners or the sales of the, I'm on the, you take the buyers around and show them the locations, not all of them with Bonner houses, okay, in this town, and some in the township, and she had a schedule with two clients, and she had to keep moving on that day. But I was very glad that I caught a lady showing a house, so letting all of you know that something is happening with the Bonner Properties, okay, in town. Thank you very much on that one. Okay, next one, 390 Lafayette, Mr. Heinonen's gone, I want to just mention, he did that landscaping and grading on the south side of our lot, 390 Lafayette on the south side of his building, and it's just plain wonderful. He graded it, landscaped it, planted grass, and covered it with straw, and hopefully get a good crop of grass come up there in the late fall or next year. Thank you, Mr. Heinonen, okay? Now, number three, or number four here, the McCatty Street excavation, there's not any people here, okay, that's going on right now, right next to the city's property for the city housing development, okay, that's the Housing Commission's property, where those units are. Okay, those are going to be lot number 223 and 227, there's going to be the numbers of those condos, and the owner and builder is a man named Patrick McClanahan, okay? And the most important thing I want everybody to know about, out there if you're listening in TV or the cable, this broken ground that they've opened up is virgin ground, okay? Where that hole is, and they're waiting for inspections, I suppose, now, but I urge everybody to go take a look at it. That's an example of everything that's below the grass in 80% of this town, especially the south side. On the north side and east side, we have a little more clay in the soil, and quite a bit of sand up there at the knolls. But I'm just letting you know, that's, I wanted to get a test made of the, how fast one gallon of water would drain through two feet of that white water sand, but it's quite fast, it goes quite fast through there, and that gives you an idea of how our water table goes up and down. The Natural Resources Branch of the school might be able to do that at some time, and we could have a demonstration, but that hole's a perfect example of 80% of the underground of this community, I wanted you to know that. Okay, moving on to number four, there were two weddings, two weddings, two weeks ago, at our wedding coordinator, Kelly Smith, this was at the chapel over in the park, and that makes a total of 12 for this year, and there's one more coming up in December, and I wish them all the best when they get married, right? Right, okay. The next one is our historical program at the freight house last week, oh boy, this was on Tuesday. It was a history of the railroad development in the state of Michigan, put on by Bob Polaski, a railroad employee and hobbyist, and history buff and a member of the society. It was the largest attendance I've ever seen for any event in our freight house, it was wall-to-wall people, too bad it wasn't recorded, but it was absolutely marvelous. Okay, next item, the next day, we all gathered there at the museum for the historical tour. We went to Holly, okay, it was very well-attended, and had great success, we went to a railroad museum, and I've provided copies of the railroad museum that we visited at the back of the room up there on the counter, if everybody wants one, feel free to take one, we'll leave them there, okay? But it was marvelous, it's in an old theater, they got five levels of railroads, six miles of railroads on each level, so it's amazing. Okay, then we visited the Holly Historical Museum, which was a doctor's house, it was absolutely fascinating, and the whole deal is the furthest I've been out of town in seven or eight years, that's no kidding, okay? And it was a wonderful experience, it took me a day to recover, but just the same, it was worth it. Okay? Number, the next one is the historic, the cleanup of the historic village, this was planned, this was last Saturday, just before the rain hit, okay? With the help of 28 volunteers from the Catholic Church, planned event coordinated by Linda and Bob Tremontier, everyone bought their own power tools, trimmers, chainsaws, rakes, mowers, whips, shovels, wheelbarrows, and yard waste bags. Everything was done, the shrubbery was cut, the flowers were trimmed, the beds were dug, the whole place, and we did it in two hours, clean up and out. Now, that's well-organized planning, okay? And that all before the rain hit at exactly 1:30 Saturday afternoon. Okay, now, okay, next one, just want to say, I attended the fire drill that Mr. Vogel had at 461 McCatty, and I was very impressed with the lights and the personnel he put forward for a night event, and it looked like they really were ready, prepared to fight a fire with all the trucks and the men, and the lighting that they could put on a situation, the average, at least I don't see it, but I was fortunate to be able to be there and see it. Okay, now, next one, I want to extend congratulations to the Family Home Video Store, they're an old, new business in this town, and they just opened up last Friday, on the 17th, I believe it is, okay? And they're in the facility that was the Honey Hole, in the plaza in front of Lion Woods, who owns the property, okay, and they've been refurbishing it, and they have all kinds of stuff in there, I'm not familiar with all of it, but they got VS4s, video, DVDs, games, and educational films, and that kind of forms of entertainment for those type, the enthusiasts of that venue. Welcome to South Lyon, I'm glad they're in town, we welcome and wish them success. Okay, next one, three weeks before the next council meeting, I mean, it's three weeks before the next council meeting, in that interval of time, we'll all have the chance to go back to standard daylight time from the eastern daylight time that we're on at this time, and so it'll be a lot darker when we come into a council meeting, but it'll be more daylight in the mornings when we get up to go to work. Okay, and I urge everybody to get out and vote on November 6th, and in the Voters' Guide that's in City Hall here, the League of Women Voters, they provide a scratch sheet for you to study up on, and as an elected person, I felt it was my duty to educate myself on all the candidates that I could, so I could make an intelligent selection, and make the proper votes to help the state of Michigan move forward. I'm not going to say who they are, or any of the pilot proposals, but I did that, and I don't think I've ever done that before in my life, but I wanted to make sure I knew all the details, right down to the library board. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Richards, Councilmember Walton.
Good evening, everyone. One thing I would like to address tonight, or congratulate, is Act of Faith, they won a Lowe's Heroes Project Grant recently, where the Lowe's employees came in, and they did plants, they planted evergreens, flowers, mulch, and all kinds of new garden accents at our Act of Faith location, and it looks wonderful, it's very beautiful, and congratulations to them, that's a big thing, to have our community recognized with a grant. The other thing is that they are advertising that their shelves are empty, so when you're out at the grocery stores, grab a couple extra non-perishable items, and drop them right in the drop boxes as you're leaving Kroger, bushes, it's right there, it does not cost you any extra time, you're already there grocery shopping for your families, and if you choose to do a monetary donation, you can send that to Act of Faith directly. In our packets, we were given a couple of letters from a couple of concerned youngsters of their parents' cars on the Dixpro Road, and I just want to invite them to come to our public meeting on October 24th, from 4 to 7, at Millennial Middle School, they can learn all about the paving project that is planned. November 10th, there's a War Dog Memorial happening, it's a wonderful event, if you haven't been to one of those, check it out. And the last thing I want to say is, check out something different from the South Lyon Library. Most people think about going there for books, DVDs, but they have this new thing that's really cool, it's a cookie cutter kit. With the holidays coming, or even a non-traditional holiday, we checked out some for the Halloween event, and made great sugar cookies, and just different fun things, something different to do with the kids, and it's just really cool that our library provides us with all these different activities. So don't forget to check that out, and everyone have a great night, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kurtzwell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I first would like to make an announcement, for Friday, October 26th, the Culture Arts Commission will be having their opening night, and the name of this particular exhibit is Sustainable Art and Sound Art Show, so if you're a member of council and you have an interest in music, I think we do have at least one member that does have a little bit of a penchant for music, there will be an art show that is going to be centered around music. I also understand that it has plants involved, so I guess I'll have to take a look at it, too. Additionally, and the artist for that, his name is Christian Pauco, he is the sound music artist. Next, with the Culture Arts Commission, I don't know if people noticed it, but at Pumpkinfest, they had children do art at the Pumpkinfest Festival, and what they've done with the children's art is they have made their own exhibit, so this will be the first unveiling of the children's exhibit that will also be at the show on Friday night, and that's Friday from 7 to 9, right here in the lobby, October 26th. Next, as to our downtown trick-or-treat, this is one, quite frankly, of the DDA's most popular and well-attended events in the city, the chairperson for this event is Abe Ayew of Mayfair Realty. Abe always does such a great job with whatever he does for the city, and more importantly, I would like to thank all the incredible businesses that we have in the downtown. These businesses have worked extremely hard to get this event going, it is just absolutely fabulous, and Bob Donahue is absolutely correct, there will be probably close to 4,000 individuals at this event on Thursday night. I am planning on being there, I'm going to be handing out candy at some point, but I did talk with Abe this weekend, and Abe told me that returning this year will be the American Dance Academy performing at the Four Corners Downtown. Last year, apparently, they performed to Michael Jackson's Thriller, and they were in costumes, so I do not know what they have planned for this year. So I think this is, if you're going to be anyplace, anywhere, you have to come and support the DDA on this incredible event that they do, it's just marvelous. Next, on Wednesday, which is just a couple days away, October 24th, is the Comedy Night at South Lyon Hotel, Andy Benignio will be there, who has performed in 42 states around the world, and Bill Baronecky is going to be there, who has been seen on ABC, CBS, and on Fox News. And, Mr. Mayor, this comedian is just for you, as he had a prior career as your favorite pastime, which is a sportscaster. The buffet is $25, starts at 6 o'clock, comedy starts at 7:30, cash bar, please call the chamber to reserve your ticket, and I have to tell you, in this season, with so much divide that we have in our country, you know, get out Wednesday night and laugh, this is supposed to be an absolutely incredible event, we're just going to try to pack that hotel and have a really, really good time. Other than that, I'd like to thank everybody for inviting us into their home this evening, have a wonderful, wonderful week, and have a very safe Halloween on October 31st, good night.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtzwell. Councilmember Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Following on to Councilmember Richards's comment, I would like to recognize the efforts of Linda Ross and Larry Ledbetter on that presentation that they orchestrated for last week, and as Councilmember Richards mentioned, there were well over 60-some people in that small room, so they did a great job with the presentation, and I'd encourage you, if you haven't been to one of those, to do so in the future. I'd also like to recognize Rachel Showerman and the Friends Club for the Salem South Lyon District Library. The Friends Club consists of over 30 elementary, middle, and high school kids, who were responsible for establishing the Little Free Library in McCatty Park in 2016. The Friends Club was recently named the recipient of the 2018 $2,000 Elaine R. Irvin Award to expand services at it. Just for a little background on the award, the grant is awarded to support a program or project which fills a significant need that impacts the library's patrons or the community. The award was established in honor of the late Elaine R. Irvin, who was a devoted member of the Metro Detroit Book and Author Society Board for many years, she worked for the Friends of the Detroit Public Library, and was dedicated to the principle that good libraries need good friends. So congratulations to the Friends Club for the Salem South Lyon District Library. I want to thank Susan Martin from the Wellhead Production Committee, in conjunction with an official from Oakland County, for organizing and presenting an informative seminar on drinking water and wells. They provided information, answered a number of questions that the attendees had, and everyone agreed it was most beneficial. I also, as the city's SEMCOG representative, had the chance to attend the SEMCOG General Assembly Meeting this past week, and one of the key topics discussed in the breakout seminars centered on infrastructure asset management. As part of that emphasis from SEMCOG, they made mention of the fact that they're going to make funds available to communities to help with their infrastructure asset management activities. So I've talked to the SEMCOG Chairman, our County Commissioner, Phil Weibert, he's going to keep us apprised of when those funds come available, and we'll certainly try to take advantage of those. Also discussed this with the city manager, Paul Zelnick, so that he can use this to further the efforts in the city as far as the capital improvement projects are concerned as well. And finally, I'd like to recognize the football teams at both South Lyon High School and South Lyon East, on their terrific seasons this year.
Yeah.
And I want to wish both teams the very best in the playoffs that begin on Friday. As you know, South Lyon High finished the regular season undefeated, I don't want to say it's been a while since that last occurred, but the last time that happened, my son was a senior at South Lyon High, and I had brown hair. Today, he's married and has three kids of his own, and as for the other, well, you can see what happened there. So congratulations to the South Lyon Lions, I wish you the very best in the upcoming playoffs.
Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy.
Thank you.
Councilmember Friesen?
Have a safe Halloween, and thank you for listening.
Councilmember Kivell?
It had been mentioned earlier, but I had a couple people come up to me and comment on the downtown, and the orange lights, the cornstalks and the pumpkins, and how and how attractive it was. It was a great kickoff. You know, when you're driving and it's still dark in the morning and you, you run through that, you come, I mean, it's, it boys you. And then when you're coming home, you see it in natural light. And, uh, it's, it's really a cute little theme they've got going there. Uh, on that football theme, um, we enjoyed, we're the benefactors of two Big Ten universities, uh, at least three very good Mac schools. We've got two high schools that have had some terrific success. And, uh, the Lions won this weekend. All of those were, for football fans, that was a really nice time. And the piece de resistance, resistance was Ohio State taking it on the chin to Purdue. I was really enjoying that. I'm looking forward to the playoff, uh, coming up Friday. Both those, those games, I'm hoping they have a substantially nicer weather than we endured last Friday. Walking from Kroger, it was, uh, it was kinda chilly out there. So, um, so good luck to everybody. And, uh, that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kivell. I will piggyback on that. Um, absolutely great environment on Friday night. Uh, South Lion was at South Lion East. And I was telling anyone that would listen to me, you know you're at a good high school football game if people are parking on the grass till halftime. So, um, South Lion ended up holding on to win 20 to 15 in an incredibly exciting game. Um, they completed their first undefeated regular season since 1996. And they've only done that four times now since 1950. So congratulations to them on a great season. And also congratulations to South Lion East. Although they lost on Friday, they had acquired enough playoff points to get in at 5 and 4. They will be going on the road to Ortonville Brandon, and that is going to be a tough out for that Brandon squad. That East team, uh, is very physical. Uh, their, their quarterback played incredibly well. And so, uh, good luck to East. And South Lion will be at home on Friday against Dexter, uh, the first time that the Jungle has hosted a playoff game in some time. And it, I don't know if it was 96, but it's been, it's been at least a decade. So if you're on, in town, uh, maybe we'll see you at the Jungle. And good luck to all our friends at South Lion East on the road next week or this week on Friday. And for that, I will look for a motion to adjourn this evening.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.